All rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the regularly scheduled Monday, October 17th, 2022 meeting of the Attleboro School Committee. This is your notice that this meeting is being electronically recorded. We are going to start tonight with our student council advisory update, and for that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Maderos.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here and I'm happy to start joining these meetings. I apologize on Ian's behalf. He has soccer practice right now and he can't get over here after because he has a foot injury right now. But we just wanted to give a quick update. We had our student advisory council regional meeting the other week. So we met with other students who represent their schools from the southeastern region of Massachusetts. And we basically talked about how throughout the year, we want to focus on like different problems in our schools and try to address them and see what can be done. So we kind of joined a smaller group of students that wanted to focus on school spirit and like student life and all that. For now at least. So we started a brief, we had like a brief conversation and we took some notes and everything about like, how can we get students more involved in the school? How can we make the experience more enjoyable for them? Just that kind of stuff. So I'm really excited to keep working with the other students around our region and yeah, I think that's all.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to our business agenda and for that, I'll start with superintendent's report. So Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you. Just wanted to briefly update the committee. As you know, we had a car accident before school on Friday. Certainly checked in over the weekend. The students were injured but are okay. And the school's working with them to help them get through whatever they need to so that we can get them back on track. I just wanted to reiterate and for anyone at home to hear that, you know, the accident was unrelated to traffic or construction having to do with the new high school. It's just, you know, an incident of a driver's mistake out on County Street. So we're happy that everyone is okay. It's a little bit, you know, disturbing whenever we have students injured, but it could have been much worse and we're glad that we'll be on the mend.
Wasn't it too separate?
So the one that made the paper had two students in it and then there was one that did not get reported as well, and that student is okay as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. I wanted to give you an update on Aptigie, which again is the platform that we're using for communication. We've been promoting the use of rooms, which is how families and educators will be able to communicate back and forth. And as of this morning, 69% of our students have a family member who has actively used Sign into Room. So we're getting very close to full saturation on that, making some real progress. Excited for that. You know, as a parent, I received the high school's message today from winter athletics, a clear sign that they are, you know, really moving towards where we're going as a district, which is that this is how we communicate with the community, with families, with students. So, you know, there are some people who are still asking for emails and, you know, our message is we're moving away from emails. It's an outdated form of communication at this point. It's hard to believe. They came and went during my career, but, you know, we're finding that it's not the best way to communicate with families. A lot of our emails go unopened and read, lost in junk mail, so forth and so on. So we really believe that this platform is going to allow us to do a better job. And I would just also point out that while we are recommending that everybody use the app for smartphones, it does not require that you use your phone. You can use the website. There is a website specifically for rooms as well, and we provide every family with a Chromebook. So, you know, everyone truly does have access. And that is, you know, we're going to continue to just do a better and better job of establishing those channels and making sure that everyone has the information they need and know where to find it in a much more organized way with this new product. So we're excited about the progress we're making there. Still got a ways to go. Quick hiring update. Last time, you know, I talked about the fact that it's, you know, two steps forward, one step back. We've made significant progress, but it continues. It's slowing down, but it's not over. We have two teacher vacancies still in the district. They're both at the high school. They're both due to recent resignations. So, you know, all the vacancies we had at the start of school, they've all been filled. These are now, you know, new vacancies that we're working through. And I think that that's partly because with, you know, the crunch for hiring on both the state and national level, you know, some people are finding jobs in other places that, you know, they see an opportunity that's better for them and they're taking it even though the school year's already started. So we're working through that. But the fact that we're down to two teachers district wide, that's real progress. And we also have five para vacancies. Three of those are due to recent resignations and two of them are because we transferred paras into other positions that we had vacant. So, you know, we create our own problems sometimes by plugging one hole, we create another. So, but those numbers are much more manageable than what we were talking about even two weeks ago. So we've made real progress on the hiring front. And then we're about to present you our MCAS results for 2022. Before I turn it over, Ms. Regan, to get into the, into the numbers, I just wanted to make a couple of remarks. Sort of my annual pitch on how I feel about MCAS and how I think we should be thinking about these results. The first thing that I'll say that I've said before is that we should never confuse achievement with learning. They're not the same thing. And in many cases, you know, our attempt to promote or to chase achievement actually works against actual long-term learning. I think most adults will admit that, you know, part of school is learning things to take the test and then forgetting them, you know, almost as soon as you walk out the door. Most of us, I think, would admit that we've forgotten more than we remember. And, you know, real learning is the stuff that sticks with you. All of us have stories about learning experiences we had as children that stuck with us. That's, that's the impact of learning. Achievement, the ability to perform on a measure in a moment in time, doesn't really necessarily equate to long-term learning. And as an institution, we're much more concerned about learning than we are about achievement. I would also point out that as a measure of learning or achievement, depending on how we look at it, MCAS isn't perfect, right? It's, you know, it's one measure. It, there are no perfect assessments. You know, any attempt to assess learning always gets complicated by the fact that, you know, it's the question that you're asking really testing what you're looking for, or are there other things that you have to know and be able to do that are inherent in the question that, you know, are a barrier to real figuring out whether or not a student understands the question or not. I think we all probably know in our lives, someone who is either a good test taker or a bad test taker, right? And that cuts both ways. Quote-unquote good test takers, they often can perform in a way on a test that doesn't really reflect what they know, but just because they are good at figuring out what the test is looking for and making good guesses. So that's not an accurate assessment. Likewise, I think we've all known people who probably are better off than they, they perform on a test and that reflects, again, some issues they have with testing. And so, you know, a test in and of itself isn't always the best way to perform, you know, really measure person's performance. And it goes deeper than that. If you've ever had an experience with, you know, a bad doctor, you know, I'd remind you that, you know, every doctor has to take the MCAT, right? Like, so there is another test that isn't necessarily great at predicting who's going to be the best at providing you with your care. So, you know, tests have value, but they don't always exactly measure precisely what they say they're going to. And, you know, the other thing I would say is that accountability as an idea, the accountability system, Massachusetts, which, you know, MCAS is supposed to be about measuring student learning, but then they take the data and they put it into an accountability system and then rank schools and judge schools based on those results. While I'm not against the idea of accountability at all, I think that, you know, being held accountable for results is an important part of life. But, you know, we have to be careful about how we measure things. And, you know, a little bit of competition isn't a bad thing either, but is it a fair competition? You know, are we measuring apples and apples? Are we comparing apples and apples? Or, you know, are different people operating on a different playing field? And how fair is it to make those comparisons? You know, it has been pointed out multiple times that, you know, Massachusetts has some of the best scores in the country, if not the best scores in the country. But, you know, all the research says the best predictors of academic success are income and, you know, a level of attainment for education of the parents. Well, you know, guess what? Massachusetts is number one in those two measures, you know? So, you know, is Massachusetts' success really about how great the educational system or is it just a product of the demographics? Similarly, when you look at MCAS results, they almost correlate one-to-one with the wealth of the communities that represent those scores. So, again, not against accountability, but are we really measuring school quality when we look at scores? Or are we just measuring, you know, levels of poverty, which, you know, wouldn't be a fair way to measure a school? So these are all reasons why I caution everyone to not read too much into scores and to not put too much weight into them. But I want to be careful because some people, for the reasons I've already outlined, you know, say, well, we shouldn't pay any attention to MCAS. And as a district, that's not, at least not how the administration feels. We think that it's very important to look at our scores. We think the scores tell us something about our performance, both as a district in the aggregate and individual students specifically. You know, at our best, we use data about student performance to improve instruction, to address deficiencies, to help students, to improve our practices. We also look for important trends in the data so that we can understand how we're doing better and to make comparisons against, you know, statewide data, which gives us a sense of how we're doing. So we care about the data. We care very much about using the data effectively to improve education for students. So we're not, you know, we're not anti-MCAS. But sometimes the way the scores are used by the state and by others, we think is actually to the detriment of our students. And we try to strike that proper balance and this evening, we'll try to do that with the way that we talk about it in our presentation. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Regan to review our results.
Thank you Superintendent Sawyer. So broad strokes, our data in Attleboro largely mirrors the state's data in that we want to make sure that we highlight the areas of recovery that we've seen so far, as well as the areas that we need to target and then focus on to improve student learning, as Superintendent Sawyer already said. The other piece to this, and I know he's, he's already mentioned it, the MCAS is just one data point. We have several pieces of data across the district that we use at all levels and all content areas to really see the areas that students need more personalized instruction to really support them and target so that they can improve their learning. So what are the goals for this evening? What I'd like to do is share with you an overview of what the administration looked like for the past four years and how that's changed in the past three, the impact that's had at like the actual student level. Also to make sure everyone understands that the 2022 data is the new baseline. And by the end of the presentation, we'll be able to share some of the takeaways that we have from the data and next steps and how those next steps directly correlate to the presentation that we'll have immediately following this that focuses on our strategic plan goals and then the strategic outcomes that are associated with it for this year. Getting used to the new, the new technology in front of me. One important thing to note is that the grade 10 students that took the MCAS last year, the last time that they actually took a test was in grade seven, and that was in 2019. They had a full test administration in eighth grade. In 2020, they were not in school. No one took MCAS that year. In ninth grade, MCAS wasn't administered. And in 10th grade, that was the first time that they had, they took both ELA and math. Similarly, the students that were in grade four last year were in grade two when we closed in March of 2020 and then were hybrid in year, in grade three. Our current grade three students that took the test, we closed in first grade, March of first grade, and then had a hybrid year in '21. So you can imagine the impact that they had or that had on their foundational literacy skills as well as their foundational math concepts as well. So looking particularly at math, this is, as I mentioned previously, in line with the state showing that there was recovery already in math. So the chart that you're looking at, the actual colored bars are the results for 2022. And the blue line that shoots across each one of those bars are the results from '21. So if there's green above the blue line, that shows that there was an improvement. The one area that shows that we have a decline, we've already started to have some conversations in that area and what we've noticed is that it's particularly around analyzing patterns, operating with multi-digit whole numbers and having students respond to constructed responses. We see the connection with that in ELA as well. Having students really explain their thinking is something that we need to really take some time and target instruction for. In terms of growth, you know, why do we see such an overall increase in performance here? We think that there's a couple of reasons why. One is ST math, that particularly in grade four, students have to analyze different puzzles. And we feel that the practices that we've created that surround our use of ST math have helped students to actually struggle and persevere through some of those puzzles. The other area, the other tool that we have that I think is helpful is Alex in the middle schools and then also some small group instruction that we know has been taking place, particularly for math. Another point to say here is that our classroom teachers really make the difference in students' direct instruction, particularly in math. And this is one area that we see that they've taken the time to really focus on some discrete skills to improve math concepts. So here are the ELA achievement results. So similarly, the bar chart on the screen are the results for 2022 and the blue line that cuts across is, are the results from 2021. So you can see in all grades except for eight, we did not meet the blue bar that we had for ourselves last year in 2021. One of the things that we recognize is that, and I mentioned this previously, that especially in grades one and two, there were some foundational literacy skills, I think, that were interrupted. And we need to make sure that we take the time to focus some of our instruction on that in our, all of our interventions right now in the grades that the students are currently in. The other area that we noticed a significant decrease is in writing, particularly in the components of the essay and the selected responses, students responding to texts with a question and going back into the text to share information that they learned. I've already seen some direct instruction in classrooms as I've been going through and visiting the schools. Teachers are already using technology to enhance and engage the learning for writing and to build up that stamina so that they can, you know, continue to improve their essay writing and selected response as well. For science, again, these results largely mirror the state. And in grade 10, the results can't be compared to previous years. This is the first year that we had the next generation science assessment. So that's why there isn't a blue line on the science bar. But we do see that there was a slight increase in grade eight and a slight decline in grade five. We have, and we are in the process of adopting OpenSciEd, which is our science program, which is phenomenon-based where students actually struggle through and persevere through their own questions to find solutions to questions that they have. So I think having OpenSciEd as part of our curriculum will help support and improve these scores as well. So takeaways, and I know I haven't mentioned this previously, student attendance also needs to be considered here because there were students that were out for significant chunks, chunks of time due to COVID or due to exposure to COVID. And we had put in so many, I think, strategies and tools with the, you know, testing that we had available in school and then the ability for students to return back as quickly as they possibly could. And so this year, we are working with Mr. Palmer to actively put together some plans for students that are, that have already been chronically absent. We've identified the top five students in every building and have created plans for them and will be consistently monitoring their attendance throughout this school year. We do see immediate recovery in mathematics for the reasons that I mentioned previously, although, you know, we're not back up to pre-pandemic results, but we are making progress and moving in the right direction. And as mentioned, in literacy, we do really need to focus on the foundational literacy skills and also target writing, particularly in the essay and in selected responses. So what are our next steps? The, we'll continue to focus on looking at our K-6 ELA program. We just adopted a program a couple of years, most recently in 3-6, but the year or two before that, we had adopted a new program in K-2. So we'll continue to support the implementation of those literacy programs as well as Lexia, which is our computer adaptive program for literacy, similar to ST math. The other next step that we have is the addition of the instructional coaches, K-12. Their role really is to look, to analyze student data, review their growth over time and then, you know, take the time to review that data with classroom teachers, plan, reflect, and then make adjustments accordingly. And so they're starting those coaching cycles right now and we, you know, are looking for some significant growth with that. The X block also is an area that we feel like will support the high schools. Students have the ability to take the time to go and meet with classroom teachers that, where they feel they need some additional support for their courses. And students can also select, or teachers can also select which students that they would like to see for additional support during that block. Of course, we'll continue to monitor our progress in all content areas and if students are moving and improving in their learning. Attendance will be consistently monitored as we had previously mentioned. And then I think one piece that, you know, directly connects to our next presentation is that the goals that we are sharing with you tonight for the strategic plan also align with, you know, everything that we had mentioned here this evening in terms of teaching and learning, family and community engagement, and then responding to students' needs. So.
Are you okay if we pause here for a question for MCAS questions? Excellent. Does anybody? Mr. Fabio?
Just very general program. You mentioned that ST math is believed to help with some of the score recovery. What grades are we using ST math on?
So ST math is K-4.
I guess I was surprised to hear that 2022 is going to be a new baseline. Because although 2022 is the first year that we were fully in person, I think the entire state experienced a number of significant disruptions between staff availability, student attendance, like you mentioned. And it hadn't occurred to me the, how many years removed the students were from the practice of preparing for MCAS and participating in MCAS. So I guess is, is this the new baseline for the next few years? And then once we're back to a more regular MCAS schedule, like 2025 will be, could, could that be a better baseline? Or is that, we're just 2022 ready to go?
They were, DESI, they were in the process of setting achievement targets and goals. And so they had set those targets previously on, I believe, 2019 data, or they were setting them, you know, annually. And so they couldn't do that for the past several years. And there has been so much interruption to their accountability system and the formula that they're using. They needed to reset everything and that's why this is the new baseline.
Mr. Storrs, thank you. Yeah, looking at the data, to me, I think the biggest takeaway was just like last year, there's no doubt COVID greatly negatively impacted us in this area, which, you know, it's gonna, it's not something easily recovered from. That, that's what I took from, from looking at the data. Yeah, it's been two years and it's, you know, it's definitely gonna take more before we see the recovery back to the 2019 levels. I know that the administration knows this. They, they're looking at the data and I appreciate that. So I know you guys are doing the right things to get us to go in that direction. I noticed that the presentation didn't really show the state data, but actually, when I compared us to the state data, I was, number one, I saw that we had the same type of trending that the state had, which shows that we're not doing anything incorrectly. And then number two, in some places, we were better than the state. And I thought that was a very positive. So I just wanted to point that out.
And I think to your point, Mr. Storrs, the, although there, there absolutely was a negative impact to see that we're, at least for math and science, that we were able to, to maintain levels is, I would say, a credit to, to the students and the educators as well. But ELA, I agree. I'm the person that if I don't have to read a book, I'm not going to. So I can appreciate that. Mr. D'Amelio?
Thank you. I, again, I, being a teacher of learning, I had seen some of these numbers. But my, my big thing is like, there's, there's both the, the vertical and horizontal analysis of this data. So while we can look and compare third grade from last year to third grade this year, when this, you know, this, at this time around next year, it's also interesting to me to see how that kid, those children in third grade, how were their fourth grade scores? How were their fifth grade scores going to be next year? To make sure that we are in fact, you know, making the analysis, making the, the changes that we, we need. So not just at the third grade level, but like how are those kids who were most impacted, how they'll be doing over time? And I know that you sliced the data that way, but it's, it'll be important when we review here the next time around to see like, yeah, the kids that were, you know, that had these challenges in third grade this year, their fourth grade scores have improved. So that's kind of the analysis that I'll be looking forward to because as we normalize being back in school full-time, there's going to be less of that. I mean, we still want to analyze that, but the impacts of COVID hopefully will be less severe or nothing at all. It'll just be more based purely on educational merits than outside forces. And that's my thoughts.
Mr. Alexa?
Just, just something that Scott said, just, it's going to take years to, to really do a good analysis because just picking on third grade, I mean, if you took somebody who finished third grade last year, they didn't really have first grade and second grade, in my humble opinion. And if you take somebody who's finishing third grade this year, they had first and second grade. So third grade's going to be much different for them. So I think until all of these grades get two or three years behind them, back in what I'll call normal school, I think it's going to be very difficult to do a lot of comparing because, you know, somebody who's graduating this year, ninth and 10th grade for them was awful. I mean, they just, they did not have, in my opinion, ninth and 10th grade. They had the best that we could do. And I think everybody did a fantastic job in the attempt of trying to do what they could under the circumstances. But I think people that are starting ninth grade this year, when you go to compare the different grades, I really think we have to think about three years from now, two years from now. Then we can really start doing some 10th grade to 10th grade comparison. Because if we do 10th grade this year to 10th grade from two years ago, God, I hope these kids smoke these out of the water. Because I mean, the, the experience that they had is completely different. And, and so I, I always get concerned when we start comparing grade to grade because you're not comparing the same students. You're comparing this year's 10th graders to last year's 10th graders and it's different balls of apples and different barrels of apples, whatever. I mean, so it just, I think the data is great to look at and I think it's very important because I completely am on the accountability bandwagon. But I think we have to be honest and realistic about what we're looking at and being fair to the data in the same way. So.
Excellent. I think it's a pretty good transition to the next portion of your presentation, part two.
Thank you, Mr. Geddes. Okay, so the purpose of this presentation is um to share the outcome, the strategic outcomes um that have been identified um for this school year, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And um you'll, throughout the presentation, you'll see how some of the things that we talk about here connect directly back to the MCAST presentation. Some of you are on the committee with me, so you remember that um this whole process started before the pandemic. And when we returned, um, we were able to pick up where we left off and continue to complete the process that we had begun. But I feel like as a district, we were able to maintain our focus and maneuver through the pandemic because we were able to, we had our vision, we had our mission connected, and that was always to engage, challenge, and inspire our students to reach their maximum potential. And so that's why I think having our cover photo as well as the quote that accompanies it um really needs to be highlighted here because we did in fact navigate through a storm, which was the pandemic. Okay, so the goals for this presentation are to provide you with an overview um of the frame and how it's aligned to the work um of the school improvement plans for all of the schools and then into some of the uh our own classrooms. Uh, we also want to make sure you can see where we are in the current timeline for the review of the strategic outcomes and then when uh progress will be shared and then new strategic strategic outcomes will be shared with you and then also um to make sure we review the next steps. So briefly, um, this high-level overview shows the alignment or the through line of the strategic plan to each one of the goals, to the technology plan, through the professional development plan, and then connected to all of the school improvement plans from the strategic outcomes. And the reason why we're highlighting this is because this is the first time that there has been a direct correlation and connection to all of these components. Um, in the past, they've always been independent silos of each other, and now this is the first time where we can actually see the direct connection. So where are we in the process? Right now, we are at number six. We're a little bit late. I will admit that, but we are at number six, um, launching our current action plan. We will be moving to numbers one, two, and three. Um, we will have them ready to present for you in December with the budget presentation. So you'll see how the new strategic outcomes for next school year directly connect to the budget as well. And then for numbers four and five, um, we'll be sharing our progress and then having those strategic outcomes that, the new strategic outcomes that were selected, how they connect to the new school improvement plans. So just as a quick overview of the strategic goals, um, we recognize that um now that the work is completely aligned to the work of the entire district, um, these outcomes are Superintendent Sawyer's goals as well as mine. And so he'll be speaking to those a little bit more at the end of the presentation, but just wanted to highlight that. Um, for goal number one, it's important here to know that we're still focusing on personalized student learning. And we spoke a lot about that in the MCAST presentation, really looking at student data and making decisions based upon that information because we know that's what drives the decisions need to change instruction. The next goal is really focusing on the active relationships with our families and our community. And Mr. Palma's team is working really hard to create those relationships with our community partners as well as families and putting plans together to support some of our um most needy students and families. And then also um ensuring that our education is is responsive to the needs of our students and their families and making sure that we're connecting to them in ways that will help them to improve student learning. So these are the strategic outcomes that are directly connected to each one of those goals. And so for um one A two, instructional materials and review process. So the teaching and learning subcommittee has been with me for the past several years as we've gone through the process of um reviewing new curriculum, piloting new curriculum, putting teams of teachers together to actually, you know, implement the new programs that were selected. And one of the things that we recognized is that we needed to make sure that we had standard operating procedures for that process and then put ourselves on a cycle so that every year there is someone that is actually piloting, someone that's reviewing, someone that's implementing, and that all the content areas um are able to participate in that process. Um, as mentioned in the MCAST presentation, we've already started to implement a a sys- a systemic process to support families in increasing attendance. Um, the district guidance team will continue to create um systems to support the transition from level to level. So particularly for students who are transitioning from grade four to grade five, our elementary schools to our middle schools, and then grade eight to grade nine, making sure students understand all the courses that are available to them and all the different options that are available, particularly here in the in the new high school, considering that we are a comprehensive high school. And then finally, the um student digital portfolios, they are deeply connected to the portrait of a graduate for us. And so we are focused on the pillars associated with portrait of a graduate. So our outcomes for students is that we want them to all be able to effectively communicate, collaborate, innovate, and be healthy and well-balanced so that they be can become productive members of our community. For goal two, um, one of the things that we had mentioned previously this evening is our public communication system. So we are focusing on the use of our new website and the app for Aptogy, making sure that all of the components of that are utilized in terms of rooms and that the we can increase communication with our families and our students. The other component that Mr. Palma has been working tirelessly on is providing additional satellite services here at Attleboro High School with some of our partner organizations. I think a lot of time, families feel more comfortable coming here to the school versus an outside organization that they're not familiar with. They, there's a level of comfort here with us. Um, and goal three, um, one of the things that we've spent some time on this past summer during our Leadership Academy was refreshing and reviewing the our systems for positive behavior intervention and support and um really helping students to understand the impact of their decisions that they've made on, you know, whether positive or negative decisions that were made and their impact on um other students. So we wanted to um make sure we took some time to focus on that. The Human Resource Council has been um working over the past couple of years to review and revise and implement systems to diversify our workforce and retain new staff. And then um the other area that we've been working with the Professional Growth Council of the Lab and each school's I L T is the professional development. So this year, teachers are working together for independent action research. Um, that's connected to the work that we started last year for responsive education with our students. So as we identified earlier in the timeline, we'll implement um the action steps that were identified in that previous slide. Um, and we will move forward with that action plan. We will continue to build out the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four um action plan and then present the committee with those strategic outcomes in December and then um take that information and share uh those new strategic outcomes with the schools so that that information can then be integrated into their school improvement plans. So. That's that's our overview of our our goals for this year and um, you know, feel like we had a direct connection to the information that was just shared with the MCAST presentation for student learning, family engagement, and responding individually to our student needs.
Mr. Star, did you have a a supplement to that related?
I do. I just didn't know if there were any questions, clarified questions before I wrap it up.
Mr. Star?
So when we talk about individual student um learn, like, you know, individualized student, obviously, at the high school, that's a pretty obvious thing since there's so many different directions and so many different opportunities, different extracurricular, there's so much at the high school, that's that's obvious. When you start going down into middle schools, if not even elementary schools, they're all in the same classes, learning the same things. Sure, we all, we're all parents. We all understand that, you know, there's some students who need extra attention, so they might be given extra guidance. You have the 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 middle group that is doing what they need to be doing, and then you have those students who are excelling and you might challenge them in certain ways. But beyond those kind of things, how do we provide that individual student program learning to the lower grades or to the middle school and elementary levels?
So I think um particularly in the in the middle school level, we're working closely with the middle school principals right now on their schedule to be able to provide them with more opportunities in terms of the um specialty areas that we have. So art, music, physical education, STEM. So in the middle school area, I would say that's one way that we're um supporting that. At the elementary level, I think it's more in terms of the the it's directed to the content areas, really specific to what are the areas that we need to personalize instruction so that students can be successful in class. Um, but I understand what you're saying. It's more about, at the elementary level, it's more about differentiation. Not that it's not like that at the middle school level as well, but um we are, at the middle school level, trying to find ways to provide students with additional ways to focus their energy and their learning.
At both levels, I'd also add that giving students choice in how they show their learning and and, you know, perhaps what they put their focus on in terms of demonstrating content. That's a, that's another thing that I see in in observations of classrooms. I think we're better at that now than we were ten years ago.
Fair point. Thanks. Any other question?
Not so much a question, it's just a, i- it's good to see, I mean, we we had a pause as we were starting to put the five-year plan together, but even just now, seeing it and how we can just focus year to year, whereas the previous plan was the the foundation because prior to that, we really didn't have like a five-year plan. But it was basically like, here's this chunk and we're gonna keep chipping away at the chunk, whereas now we have the flexibility to kind of redirect our sales, you know, at the end of a year as we as we do an assess and say, okay, we thought this is where we might need to be. We realize now we have to, we have to move this way. I'm I'm excited to see that because I I I think that's the best way to be successful. It's like a, we can call it a five-year plan, but it's really like a year-over-year of evolving plan as we as we need to go. So it's it's good to kind of finally see that in action in a full school year, you know? So um I'm excited to see what December brings.
And what the second half of the plan will bring.
Yeah.
Now that we're about halfway through it.
Yeah, I mean, Ms. Regan and I, I think, are very proud of where we are at this moment as a district. Um, we've worked very hard over the last seven years to put us in a place where uh we can talk this way um about our plans, right? The the alignment between the strategic plan, improvement plans, educator goals, uh, budget process, decision-making within the district, they're they're all, you know, they've all been brought into an alignment that um was really hard to even imagine was possible um when we started. And, you know, I'm not saying that we don't have more work to do. There's always more work to be done. But we really feel like um we're no longer, as Ms. Regan talked about, you know, operating in silos, that, you know, there's, you know, as we've talked about, there's almost a thousand people who show up to work every day. Uh, they're doing multiple things every day and that, you know, those things can can be like herding cats and, you know, working against each other unintentionally, or you can have it all pull in one direction and accomplish greater things. And we really believe that we're doing that. Um, you know, we have that the strategic plan gives us a a a blueprint for, you know, where we're trying to get to. Um, and every year, there are unexpected challenges that come up and creating a plan that's flexible enough that, you know, doesn't over-prescribe what we have to do while still trying to, you know, provide a clear path to where we're going is is what we're trying to do with our planning. And I I think we're doing a better job of striking that balance. And, you know, as we alluded to, as part of this is that for the first time, really, I think we're we're comfortable in saying that the the district's goals, you know, what are our goals? The district goals are our goals. You know, in my evaluation, Ms. Regan, it's about these goals. In your evaluation of me, it's about these goals. And at our next meeting, I'll be bringing them, uh, bringing in metrics that we can talk about in terms of how to measure our success towards achieving what we've just now, you know, articulated as, you know, this year's plan, um, while we're simultaneously starting to map out
Next year's.
Next year's plan as well, which is how it works. And, you know, we have to stay one step ahead and that's how it is. But um we really feel like, you know, uh, we've learned a lot of things doing this work over the years and that um we're in a, we're in a particularly good place. And then to bring this back to MCAST, you know, I, again, you'll notice that the strategic plan, um, you know, it isn't about getting a certain score or a number, right? Um, we're we're doing something much bigger than that. And while we do want our kids to demonstrate that they're learning, right, and we want the trends to be in the positive direction, um, you know, as as much as I think the MCAST is a flawed exam, um, I, when I look at it, I say, I would like students at Attleboro to do well on it. I I I think it's it's an achievable goal and it's something that we need to work at and it's something that we need to take seriously. I think when we lose sight of the bigger picture of what we're here to do, we're less likely to accomplish it, right, than if we put it in its proper perspective, which is what we're trying to do. Um, but, you know, this is the work and these goals, we think, are the best way to put all of our efforts in 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 us, in the direction that's going to help us to to have the greatest success. And, uh, you know, well, time will tell, but I I think, you know, the last plan and and all the great work that we did, and, you know, it's very easy to point to things that, you know, when we set the that plan in motion, people thought that those things were inconceivable. And, you know, here we are, and so many of them were accomplished. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna do the same thing with this one as well. Um, and, you know, we know what we need to do. We know the district, we know, you know, the students that we serve. And, you know, I, as we talked about, I mean, the pandemic, the impact is real. It's very real. I I don't think any of us needed MCAST scores to to make that point to us. No one was surprised, right? Anyone with kids at home knows that they were negatively impacted by that experience. And, you know, as much as I hope that it's soon that we stop talking about it, but I I don't think there's any reason to believe that the impact is going to dissipate quickly. You know, we have kindergartners this this year, right? I mean, they weren't with us during the pandemic, but guess what? Their experience before getting to school was deeply impacted. And we're seeing, you know, the results of that, um, you know, as they're coming to schooling and, you know, some of them are not quite prepared because they did not have the normal experiences that would have put them in a better place. And so, you know, I told the the entire district on the first day that I don't think there's anything to, any reason to believe that, you know, this will, this will work itself out between now and the time I retire because those kids are gonna be with us for for a long time. And um while I I think we should be a little bit less concerned about what, you know, the media talks about as learning loss, as I told you, you know, a lot of people forget what they take on the test anyways. I, so I I care a little bit less about that and more about the fact that um the the impact was real. You know, I have two boys at home. Um, I'm here to tell you, the their normal development was was inhibited by um their inability to just have a normal four-year high school experience. That, they were robbed of that. And um I don't think that, you know, a couple of questions that they can't get on a test is the the greatest thing that they lost. And um as a district, we need to be worried about, you know, the bigger picture here, that these are human beings and it's their development that we're concerned with. And it's not about where they are today or where they are on test day. It's who these children become as adults that we're concerned with. And we're trying to put in the good work so that um we're all be happy with where they are when they're, you know, independent adults and successful.
And I think I think many of us agree that MCAST is absolutely a flawed system, but it's the system nonetheless.
It's the system, yeah.
So how we work within it and how we use it, like you said, to our advantage for planning purposes, um, is up to us to decide. And and I personally prefer that MCAST be nowhere near our strategic plan or our district goals for for all of those reasons. But. Any other questions or comments for the administration? Excellent. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Any other?
That concludes my report.
Excellent. Uh, so uh, next on the agenda is approving our minutes of our October third, twenty twenty-two meeting. I'd like to stand a motion.
Come on.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, consent agenda, I will read all. Uh, consent agenda, I will read all three and take one vote. Uh, motion to accept a donation of art supplies, three hundred sixty-four inch plates, one hundred twenty-five eight ounce water-based fast drying assorted paints, and one thousand four hundred forty-one inch sponge paint brushes with an, worth an estimated value of seven hundred dollars from Home Depot in Attleboro. A motion to accept the donation of sixty hardback copies of my very favorite book in the whole wide world by Malcolm Mitchell for the second grade students at Studly Elementary School. Uh, eight ninety-nine per book, valued at eight ninety-nine per book for a total value of five hundred thirty-nine dollars forty cents from the Share the Magic Foundation. And a motion to accept the donation of ninety hardback copies of my very favorite book in the whole wide world by Malcolm Mitchell for the second grade students at Thatcher Elementary School, again valued eight ninety-nine per book for a total of eight hundred nine dollars ten cents from the Share the Magic Foundation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Yeah, dude. Rob, any question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Why are we doing two of the schools? Do we know that? Why is it not all five of the elementaries?
They had a partnership with them. Right, they, they must have known either the administration or someone within the schools, that's how it happened.
Makes sense, thank you.
Sorry.
Forgot to look up. Uh, so that leads us to our, uh, subcommittee meetings. Uh, first, I'll turn it over to Ms. Johnson for a teaching and learning update.
Thank you, Mr. Gettis. Uh, this is my report of the teaching and learning subcommittee meeting, um, dated October fifth. We were lucky to have two guest speakers at our meeting. Um, our first guest speaker was Associate Principal Kevin Gorman, and he joined us to discuss the new high school, or not the new high school, the new schedule at the new high school, um, and how, and its, its rollout. And I'm happy to report that overall, it was found to have been a success. The subcommittee reviewed with Mr. Gorman, uh, the efficiencies in the schedule and how it works by dovetailing in with the house offices. There was definitely a lot of thoughtfulness put into the schedule, a lot of time, a lot of input. And so we're happy to see that once it has actually been put in motion, uh, it has been working well. There, um, were a few challenges with the lunch schedule that was discussed. And when we reviewed the observations, it appeared to be mostly that it was just new. Um, there was some signage issues, but observations were made, some adjustments were made, uh, because of those observations. And it appears now to be running much more smoothly. Also discussed regarding the new schedule was the new X block. This concept was one of the, the big new pieces of the new schedule. Currently, the X block is being used mostly for advisory and for house assemblies at this time. But as the year progresses and as was discussed earlier, it's gonna be used more and more often, uh, for the academic supports that students either request or are, um, um, are, um, suggested to, to take. Uh, our next guest speaker was CTE Director Jeremy Gay. He provided an update on our CTE program. Um, and I just wanna take a moment to, again, you know, just note that there's gonna be, soon to be next year, eighteen programs. And these eighteen programs, and especially the exploratory that the freshmen take, give our students real-world, um, life skills. There's all, and again, there is such a vast menu. Our students also get a jumpstart on any trade that they may want to pursue. Anyone who's going into academics, especially graphic design, um, engineering, there's CTE programs that are also gonna help them advance their academic career. So we're really, really lucky to have this program. I know I say that almost anytime I'm reporting on the CTE program. But, you know, again, this is, this is really a jewel that we have in Attleboro. Recently, our, uh, CTE program had a really proud moment. They were giving some tours, I believe it was Desi and other state officials.
Yeah.
And they really, they, they shared the feedback that, that Attleboro High School, that we did this right and that our comprehensive high school is a model for other schools in the state. So, again, really, really great feedback there. And in the spirit of continuous improvement, we're not necessarily settled on these eighteen programs. Jeremy and his team are always researching other programs that might be a good fit to bring into the high school. So, um, again, we wanna thank him and his team for doing all of this, this work for us. And I also wanna take a moment to thank both of our guests for attending. I know it, they're taking time out of their schedule and we always appreciate them coming in to present and answer any questions the subcommittee may have. We also were lucky to have a preview of the MCAS results, thanks to Ms. Regan. They had just come in and, um, we got to discuss some of that raw, raw data. So thank you for taking time to do that as well. I don't wanna rehash anything else because we discussed it pretty thoroughly, uh, in our open, uh, committee meeting here. But just again to emphasize that the MCAS, while it is one important measure of success, it is only one measure of success and it doesn't address the student as a whole. So I'm, again, appreciative that we're working at the, um, the portrait of student in order to see the, um, see the student as a whole. But I do want to ask the committee, you know, now that we've reflected a little bit on the MCAS information that was presented earlier, does anybody have any additional questions that they want to ask right now about it? Um, okay, great. Well, that does conclude my, my report.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Uh, next is our finance and budget subcommittee, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Larson.
Thank you. Uh, the budget and, uh, finance and budget subcommittee met, um, October fifth. We went through a number of items. Uh, Mr. Tato took us through the, uh, monthly budget reports. Um, at this point, really the only item of concern, uh, so far, uh, we're still very young into the budget, um, is we are having to do some outside hiring, uh, for some of the programs that we're required to have, uh, paraprofessionals involved in. And, um, so if we have to use these services throughout the entire, uh, school year, um, obviously buying, uh, contract help on the outside versus hiring them ourselves is more expensive. So this is a concern. And this is across the, you know, anybody who's trying to hire anybody these days. I mean, it's a very challenging time to hire people. And, uh, so I know the administration's continuing to work on this. But it is one of those moments of concern and we'll continue to monitor and update the committee as the year goes through. We had an MSBA update, um, I'll give you the short version. There's still a few items here at the high school, obviously, that will continue to work through, uh, a punch list, uh, through most of the fall, I'm gonna guess. But it is progressing very well. Again, through the entire district, we're in the midst of upgrading, uh, quite a bit of the, um, heating and air conditioning, uh, in most of the buildings with a train contract. That's going extremely well, uh, it's actually ahead of schedule, uh, so that's very good news. At the time of the meeting, uh, we had an update on the two, uh, floors that we're replacing at Hyman Fine Hill Roberts. At the time of the meeting, the floor at Hill Roberts was just above done. Uh, they were in the process of just about going out and walking on it. The Hyman Fine project is taking significantly longer than it's supposed to. Uh, and at the time, again, of the meeting, we were still a solid month away, uh, from being able to use that floor. Uh, we had a review of the fee for service program. We have two motions to bring forward tonight. Uh, one is with a rental agreement for Abacus and one is the approval of prior year invoices to be paid. Before we get into those two motions, I'll just ask if there's any questions from the committee.
Mr. Stores.
Uh, looking at the Abacus contract, I saw the twenty-five thousand, that, I just wanted to verify, that's to cover the cost of licensing? Is that right? That's what it said in the contract? Okay, 'cause I, I'm pretty sure it said licensing, that's why I was questioning it.
I'll check. It's for the use of the facility.
It is, okay. And, and I guess in relation to that, 'cause like we kinda talked about a little earlier, I know that the, the office space that we're gonna be providing is gonna stay in Abacus for now.
To the best of my knowledge.
And, and knowing that as part of our, uh, initial discussions regarding the new high school and the cost to the citizens, the three buildings that we would have to vote to give back to the city, we've already done two. Briggs is one of them. Knowing the lifeline, the, the, the life of the loan, what timeline we'll be looking at to vote that back to the city so that they can go through the process that they gotta go through to sell it so that, that relief would be felt by the citizens.
So they're in the process of marketing and negotiating the other two buildings so that they're, they're not really in a position right now to deal with Briggs. But as soon as they're in a position to deal with Briggs, we'll have to.
You expect that to be one year, two years out?
In that, no more than two.
Okay, fair enough, thanks.
Ms. Gettis.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Larson. I just pulled up the contract, uh, Mr. Stores. It says provider shall pay a fee to APS in the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars as a license fee for the use of classrooms.
Now I understand. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions. Uh, the first motion we have, uh, to bring forward, uh, is recommended the full committee to approve one-year Abacus rental agreement, uh, for space at Briggs Corner from July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-three, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, the second motion to bring forward is recommended the full committee to send to municipal council for, municipal councils, excuse me, for approval of payments of prior year invoices and obligations in the amount of seventy-nine dollars and forty cents as broken down in the October fourth memorandum.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. That is my, my report.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Larson. Uh, any other new business that anyone would like to bring forward to the committee? Excellent, so that will bring us to open forum. Uh, open forum is an opportunity for, uh, anyone in the community to address, uh, the committee. Uh, we are interested in your feedback and any information you have to share, but we cannot respond, uh, the committee and the administration cannot respond until further information is reviewed. Uh, is there anyone here to address the committee as part of open forum? All right, uh, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you very much.